Good evening, everyone, and welcome. The time is now seven o'clock. And before we begin the regularly scheduled council meeting, we do have a public hearing on three ordinances that were read in the first record at the previous council meeting. It's gonna be ordinances 1208, 1209, and 1210. So we'll start with 1208. Ordinance 1208 is concerning approving a lease agreement with Piedmont Properties LLC, also known as the Promenade Grill. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, a local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three, thirty-four, and seventy-six of the Havertide Grace City Charter to approve a lease for the Promenade Grill. Is anybody here this evening here to speak on ordinance 1208 on a public hearing? Any comments from the council members? Okay. Without any comments from the public or the council, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1208, and the time is now seven oh one. We'll go on to ordinance number 1209, concerning amending chapter seventy, which is fees. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article elevenE of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend chapter seventy, fees, to update the general schedule of fees charged by the city for various permits, licenses, and other services they're under. Is anyone here this evening to speak on ordinance 1209? Any comments from the council? Okay. Without any comments from the public or the council, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1209, and the time is now seven oh two. Our last public hearing will be on ordinance 1210. Ordinance one-two-one-zero, establishing, or I'm sorry, concerning establishing chapter one-fifty sidewalk policy. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article elevenE of the Maryland Constitution, a local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertide Grace City Charter to establish a new chapter, one-fifty, in the city code to be titled Sidewalk Policy Concerning a Regulation of Public Sidewalk Use Within the One Hundred and Two Hundred Blocks of North Washington Street, Providing for Enforcement and Penalties and for Other Purposes. Is anyone here this evening in attendance to speak on ordinance 1210? Okay, hi.
Hi there, good morning, Mayor and Council. Joe Smith, one-ten Flying Ebony Place, here at Havertide Grace, and also owning a business at two-twelve North Washington. So this policy obviously impacts our business as well as multiple other businesses. The good news is for you is I don't have any, any major issues with the policy. I was expecting that it would happen. I saw you out-measuring, or your team out-measuring a few weeks ago, so I kind of expected it might happen with the wider sidewalks. So no, no real concerns there. I think there will be a few businesses that are in, at the ends of the block, and in some cases, like on the one-hundred block, in the middle of the block where the, the curb is closer because of the planning beds, for example. So there's probably gonna be some negotiation or discussion with some of those businesses that might be impacted. But from what I can tell, I got the tape measure out, and the signs, like our A-frame signs are permitted pretty much between the back of the new benches that are there, out to the curb, and that seems to be sufficient space for us. The only concern maybe is people opening their car doors that swing out that might end up hitting the sign, so we're gonna have to play with that a little bit to see how that works. But overall, I don't have any major concerns as a business owner in terms of how it'd impact our business. I will say though, however, it was a little concerning that no one really reached out, whether it's the council member who introduced the bill, or a member of economic development, or whomever might have that responsibility. It would've been nice to have gotten a heads-up that, that this policy was being considered. We're all business, busy as citizens, as busy as property, as business owners, and so we try to stay on top of what's before the council, and especially in areas that impact our lives and our businesses, but we can't always do that. And so we, we appreciate a little extra help from the administration and from the council to give us a heads-up when things like that might be happening. We have several members of the council are on our Facebook, our Downtown Merchants Facebook page. A simple, "Hey, heads-up, this is happening," would've been sufficient, I think, to give us fair warning, but overall, I guess I don't, I haven't heard any major concerns from the business owners that might be impacted by this. So welcome, welcome having a policy so we all know how to, how to do our business with that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening to speak on ordinance 1210? Any comments from the council? If any further comments from the council or the public, we will now close public hearing on ordinance 1210, and the time is now seven oh six. Okay, that concludes the public hearing, and we're gonna start the council meeting. Good evening, it is October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, the time is now seven oh seven. I call to order a regularly scheduled meeting of Havertide Grace Mayor and City Council. Council President Ringsucker.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Schenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Booker.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Present.
Please join me for opening prayer, I'm sorry, pledge allegiance and opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, as it always gives me a great pleasure and great honor to call forward Reverend Gene Proud to start us off this evening. Good evening, sir, we're happy to have you with us.
And I'm happy to be here. Let's pray. Father, the mayor has asked for good weather this weekend because they have a program that they need to run. And while we recognize that your blessing is very often in the form of rain, we really request that this weekend your blessing be in the form of sunshine and pleasant weather, and not a lot of wind, and pleasant people being at that event. Everything being kind and generous. And just nice. We ask that everything that council does, and all of their deliberations, be infused with your wisdom and knowledge so that our lives as citizens can be nice. And we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Reverend Proud. Please proceed. Item five, the approval of the minutes, city council meeting minutes of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Booker, seconded by Councilmember Schenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, carry six zero in affirmative. Item B, city council closed session meeting minutes, October, from October sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the council president, seconded by councilmember Jones. Questions or comments?
I'll need to read the, the vote in the record, topics actually discussed. Discussion of status of the removal proceedings of Mr. Place from the Planning Commission and Mr. Place's recent resignation. As action taken, given that Mr. Place's resignation has rendered the, sorry, removal proceedings moot, council president Ringsucker moved to withdraw the written charges for removal against Mr. Place, seconded by councilmember Jones, motion passed six to zero.
Thank you very much, council president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, carry six zero in affirmative. Item six. Normally, we have public citizen comment, item six, but we moved up to something more special, more important. We have a list of four of our finest police officers for city Havertide Grace receiving promotions this evening, and it would be, give me a great honor if you would indulge me if I could swear them into their new offices in front of this great crowd this evening. So, everybody cool with that? Okay. Chief, you wanna just, how we do this last thing? Do we do it one-on-one, or did we do it all four?
Uh, I think they did it.
One at a time, I thought we did two. Okay, perfect. Then I would like to call forward Sergeant Jeffrey Cookwell. For me, council president.
Sure.
Public safety, council everyone, for me. Okay, Sergeant, I'm gonna ask you, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm gonna say the word aye, when I say the word aye, repeat the word aye, but also say your name.
Right.
Aye.
Aye, Jeffrey Cookwell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement of.
The requirement of.
Office I'm about to assume.
Office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duties.
Of police sergeant for the city Havertide Grace.
Of police sergeant for the city of Havertide Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thanks, sir.
While they're coming up here, I'm gonna ask you, in the scientist room. Sergeant Lathem, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm gonna say the word aye, when I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also include your name. Aye?
Aye, Jeremy Lathem.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirements of.
The requirements of.
The office I'm about to assume.
The office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the laws.
Support the laws.
And Constitution thereof.
Constitution thereof.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of police sergeant for the city of Havertide Grace.
Police sergeant for the city of Havertide Grace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Corporal Cooper, welcome. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, when I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also say your name. Aye?
Aye, Jay Cooper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement of.
The requirement of.
The office I'm about to assume.
The office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
Support the laws.
And support the laws.
And Constitution thereof.
Constitution thereof.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of the duties.
A police corporal for the city of Havertide Grace.
A police corporal for the city of Havertide Grace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
I'd like to call forward Jameson Hughes, Corporal Jameson. Okay, in case you weren't listening, the other three people. Please raise your right hand, and I'm gonna say the word aye, and after I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye and also say your name, sir. Aye?
Aye, Jameson Hughes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement of.
Requirement of.
The office I'm about to assume.
Office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the laws.
And support the laws.
And Constitution thereof.
Constitution thereof.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duties.
Of corporal for the city of Havertide Grace.
Corporal for the city of Havertide Grace.
To the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Thank you, Corporal. Hi, everybody, everyone. Okay, we're going to move to item seven, which is comments from citizens. This is the part of the meeting this evening, if you're here to speak on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. If you're here this evening to speak on any other matter of city business, now's the time to do so. Normally what we do, if anyone went online or filled out a form ahead of time, I will call on those citizens first. After I call on all the pre-filled out forms, I will then open up the floor at large. All you have to do is just raise your hand and be recognized, all right? So I do have, I do have a little handful, like maybe five forms. I'd like to call forward, um, apologize if I don't say it as correctly, Cindy. Hey, Rosari, I'm sorry, I don't know if I Cindy from Tidewater Drive. What's your last name, Cindy?
Cindy Rosari.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if that was a R or an F. Thank you. It's okay.
It's okay, it's my husband's fault.
Okay, you're from Tidewater Drive, and go ahead and, you're good.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Cindy Rosari. I live at 306 Tidewater Drive in Bayview Estates. I'm here to address this body tonight as a board member of the HOA, as well as a homeowner of four years in this community, having relocated. I recently saw a neighbor, Mr. Robert Schwartz, present here tonight, who addressed this board on October the sixth regarding a playground. Was very disturbed by what I heard and what was told to this body. I joined the board in two thousand twenty-four at the behest of Mr. Schwartz in his campaign to take our community from the mismanagement of HPS, our former management company, and in particular, stormwater pond issues. Mr. Schwartz informed me at that time that he had a lawsuit too that was pending against the HPS, an attorney's office, and the board. Both Mr. Schwartz and myself were elected to the board in two thousand twenty-four. However, Mr. Schwartz desired to be the president of that board, and he lost that to our current and past year President Christopher Ward, who will be talking to you today. Mr. Schwartz subsequently resigned his director position after three months when the two thousand twenty-four board. In January of two thousand twenty-five, a committee of officers of the board began the task of revising and updating our bylaws. I was approached by Mr. Ward, Mr. Schwartz, and asked if I was part of that process, which I replied yes. At that time, he told me the board had thrown down the gauntlet, and we will regret what we have done, and in particular, Chris Ward. I implored Mr. Schwartz to act with reason and to let the new bylaws play out. That is the history that brings me here before you today. Mr. Schwartz uses people and is using this body, along with the Havertay Grace Police Department and other city agencies, as pawns to advance his personal agenda and assage his bruised ego. On numerous occasions, we've been called, had the police called on for volunteers for their labor to upkeep the park, as well as DNR. Each of these efforts have been nothing more to harass and cause harm to this board. He further misrepresents to this body and the permit department of the city regarding the circumstances of the replacement of a playground equipment. I ask this body to keep this history in mind, as I'm sure Mr. Schwartz is not done using the city agencies and this council as pawns to destroy our board, and in particular, to impugn our president, Chris Ward, who has worked over a hundred hours a month to bring us back from the disrepute that was, we were put in by our former management company. Mr. Schwartz could put his efforts into fixing rather than destroying, if he chose to do so, but his ego is more important. And that is why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd call forward Katie Arnold. Good evening, Ms. Arnold, and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Katie Arnold, and I'm honored to serve as chair of the annual Community Thanksgiving Dinner, one of the longest-running Thanksgiving events in our region. Each year, our dinner is prepared at the Havertay Grace Community Center. I'd like to sincerely thank the city for your continued support and use of that facility. It makes this event possible. The dinner is organized by the Thanksgiving Dinner Committee, part of Community Projects of Havertay Grace Incorporated, a 501(c) nonprofit. This year marks the thirty-seventh Thanksgiving, which originally started as a Smiles event, and our thirteenth year under the Community Projects of Havertay Grace umbrella. Our mission is simple and meaningful, to ensure that no one in the community is alone or hungry on Thanksgiving Day. Last year, with the help of over three hundred volunteers, we delivered twelve hundred and fifty warm homemade meals throughout the region. This program couldn't be what it is today without the leadership of Don Osman and Fred Wills, and we thank them for the strong foundation they've built. I'm here tonight to raise awareness and invite the public to participate, whether by requesting a meal, volunteering, or donating. This year, all meals will be delivered to senior housing, nursing homes, and private residences from Elkton to Edgewood, with an emphasis on Havertay Grace, Aberdeen, and Perryville. Meals are provided free of charge. To request a meal, I'd ask that you visit tinyurl.com/ThanksgivingDinnerSignUp. Excuse me, ThanksDinnerSignUp. Or call four four three three four five eight one two zero. To volunteer, please visit tinyurl.com/di-n-n-e-r-v-o-l. Volunteers that want to help prep the meal should arrive at eight AM. If you'd like to deliver outside of our core region, please come at nine thirty, and local delivery drivers should come at ten fifteen AM. If you'd like to donate food or supplies, please call four four three three four five eight four seven seven, or email us at hdgthanksgivingdinner@gmail.com. You can find all of this information on the Thanksgiving Dinner Committee page of the Community Projects of Havertay Grace website. Thank you again for your ongoing support, and thank you to all of the volunteers and donors who helped make this special tradition possible. Wishing everyone a safe and meaningful holiday season.
Katie, could you repeat the email, the address for the sign up for the people at home?
Yes, to request a meal.
The meal, yeah.
It is tinyurl.com/ThanksDinnerSignUp. Or you can call four four three three four five eight one two zero.
Thank you for coming. I believe there's links to this also on the city's webpage?
That's correct. There's links to both the volunteer sign up and to also receive, to sign up to receive a meal on the city's website.
Now, in the past, I know that Thanksgiving Committee has had a lot of people throughout the community ask for meals. How are, how are things going so far as far as the signups?
We opened up the sign up last Wednesday, and we currently have about three hundred and fifty people signed up. We don't have any of the large senior apartments yet, or not many of them.
We're waiting for those to come in.
So I think we'll be much higher in the next week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes. As far as volunteers go, is there anything that you're looking for specifically, like more skilled volunteers for certain things, or?
Yes, we welcome all volunteers on Thanksgiving Day. If we have anybody in the community that has any culinary skills that would like to volunteer the Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday before, as well as on Thanksgiving, if you could contact us via that email or the four four three three four five eight four seven seven, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you need anybody, Katie, to test taste the dressing, I'm always available. I'm right around the corner. You know how to find me.
Of course.
I believe, interestingly, this year, we've had a lot more school participation. So as in past years, the dressing will be made by Havertay Grace High School. The rolls will be made by Aberdeen High School. And this year, Bel Air High School has offered to make a hundred pies for us. So we're looking for more ways to involve students through their culinary programs.
It's great that Aberdeen has a role in this. Thank you.
Right.
Call that buy-in.
I'd call forward Mr. Christopher Ward. Good evening, sir. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Christopher Ward, one nineteen Hudson Court.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, city members of the council, I'm not going to take up much of your time. I just came to bring a couple of things to your attention, and also to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I know there's been a lot of misinformation flying around, like Cindy said. Cindy's been such a stalwart. She's, she's just an amazing person who has been so dedicated to working with us. You know, when we took over Bayview last year, we really didn't know what we were walking into. It was really a train wreck. And it's taken a lot of time and a lot of effort, and you know, in any situation where you go from nothing to something, there's always going to be some misunderstandings, some, some issues, and I feel like we're really working through that. One of the things that we discovered is, a lot of the stuff that the city provides, especially for our kids, is downtown. It's not up on the hill. And so it's kind of falls to some of the communities up there to provide some, some outdoor recreational facilities, like playgrounds and walking trails and, and stuff like that. We had one. It was put in in ninety-seven, but it was in really bad shape. So we've been working to bring that back. Unfortunately, it's not been a smooth process. It's not been something that, you know, it was like opening Pandora's box, but I feel like we're really in a good place now. And what I want to focus on is the positives. The fact that, you know, Havertay Grace, the place I was born, has always been a great community, where people, you know, were either, you either knew them, you went to church with them, or you're related to them. And, you know, when, when you come from a small community like this, you know, people have long memories, but they also have big hearts. And I think that we in Bayview are trying to make it more of a community. This coming Sunday, we're going to have a Halloween party for our kids at our park. We're going to try and do an event. We just put in a new flagpole at our park. We're going to do something for the veterans on Veterans Day. We're looking to put a Christmas tree that we're going to light for the holidays, and, and an Easter egg hunt at Easter. Community events, so that there's stuff not just down here in old Havertay Grace, but also up on the hill. Nope, I'm out of time. So I just wanted everybody to, to be aware that, that we're working really hard up there, and, and I'm hoping that some of the bumps in the road are behind us, and that we can have a great working relationship with the city.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to call forward Donald Mandel. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Donna Mandel, seventeen twenty-five Tower Road, Aberdeen, here on behalf of the Havertay Grace Farmers Market. Can't believe it's time to request the permit for the winter market. I feel like I was just here requesting the permit for the regular market. But it's that time again. We're ready to schedule. I think this will be our fourth winter market, January through April, on the first and third Saturdays from nine to eleven. We're really, vendors are really looking forward to it. I think we're going to have even more participation in this year's winter market than we've had in the past. We've seen a lot of new vendors come into the market this year. It's been a great positive experience. The new move to the location right out, right out front here on Pennington Avenue has been positive for the vendors, has been positive for the community. I've heard nothing but good response from everyone on it. And I do want to especially thank Chief Crass and the Havertay Grace Police. They've been a wonderful partner with us there. And can I come back when the dog gets the promotion, Miko? We love seeing the canine dogs come through the farmers market. I'm here if you have any questions on it.
Questions? Thank you, Donna.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'd call forward Mr. Bob Schwartz. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. I'm Bob Schwartz, two eleven Mallard Court.
Welcome.
First, I have to say I'm in shock because Ms. Rosari spent three minutes on the person she was talking about. It's all, you know, it's baseless, but I'm not going to stoop to that level. As far as the park goes, again, everything I've done, when I've come in here, my appeal, everything is based on code-related, fact-related. I did not bash anybody. So let me get on with this. Today is not, forgive me for a second here. I'm not here to beat your dead horse. We've already talked about this park, the, the project, the, the, you know, for me, from the permitting perspective is, is where I'm at. You know, so what I hope to do is just make sure we're on the same page. And I want to thank you, Chris, for not bashing me, for just being positive. So really what I want to do today is just kind of do a quick recap, and, well, again, I'm kind of flustered here after that, but basically, you've, you've issued a permit to own a piece of land that is not buildable, or you cannot you cannot develop it, okay? There's non-titled wetlands right next door to it, seventy-five foot buffer zones, can't build there, but you've given the permit to them. You've, you've, they, you've given them an address, okay? Two oh one Mallard Court, and And Chief, this is for you. I found that today, if you put, if somebody calls and says, "My son fell off the sliding board," I'm at 201 Mallard Court, they're going to say, "We don't know where that is." No, it's not in the system anywhere. So, you know, again, as I've said, it's a straw address, okay? But, so as we go forward, you know, again, I had some things here, some recaps. You guys are all familiar with everything that's going on out there. And like I said, I'm a little flustered because I wasn't expecting to be bashed here tonight. But, so 35 years of dealing with code issues and code compliance and permitting and all that in my industry, you know, to me, there's two answers really, you know. Number one is quite simple. I think I've proven to you guys that the permits that you've issued, you didn't quite do your due diligence to make sure that all your bases are covered. So, you know, I look at it and say, "You've got two, two ways you can go on this thing." Number one is you take ownership that you made a mistake. Let the applicants know, "Hey, we made a mistake. You can't build on there. There's non-titled wetlands. There's, you know, all kinds of things. There's safety issues." Okay. I guess I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. That's a final, pre-filled out a form I have. I will now open up the floor at large. If anybody wishes to address the council on an agenda item or any other item of city business, please raise your hand and be recognized. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Member for City Council. Hello, Mr. Ringzacher.
Hi.
My name is Jackie Baker. I reside at 319 Heatherway in Bayview Estates.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. I'm currently the Vice President of the HOA. We are here tonight as a team to give you guys some facts. People have passions about things and sometimes when they get passionate, things get a little foggy when they share things. Everyone has their own opinion and everyone has a right to their opinion. I'm here to specifically discuss an incident that took place that some of you are very familiar with, and it's the famous painting of the curb. I was involved in that, that morning, and I just want to let you know how all that came about. As you know, we're renovating the, not renovating, we are cleaning up the park that has been there for 30, 30 years probably. I've lived in the neighborhood for 35. My children played on that playground many times. During the course of renovating, equipment is going in there, cutting limbs, taking limbs out. We've had a problem with getting equipment in there because a lot of the neighbors park in that area and they block, there's a pathway that goes through the park. And the maintenance equipment used that, the guys that mow the lawns and things. So we wanted to create an egress, especially since we're having a park with new equipment put in, for maintenance equipment to be able to get in and for emergency equipment if someone were to get hurt. So we issued, or actually the HOA sent a letter to the city requesting an actual egress to the park to be designated so that we could have that spot marked so people didn't park in that one 11-foot space. Couple of weeks after we sent the letter in, we had our grounds maintenance people come out to discuss with them removing our playground equipment because it had been deemed very unsafe by the Little Tykes people and we had to remove it. Upon that conversation with Mr. Noah, we asked him if they're able to paint a curb if we get this approval. And he said, "Yeah, sure, we can do it." We never discussed a date. That was July 18th. On July 25th, the following Friday, I got a phone call from Mr. Noah. "Hi, Jackie, I'm here to paint the curb." He's like, "But there's a truck parked here." And I'm like, "Oh, well, let me call Chris." Chris called the gentleman after they moved the truck. They moved the truck. Mr. Noah said, "I'm going to stay here in the neighborhood. If you need me, just let me know. I'll come back and paint the curb." The truck got moved. Chris called me and I said, "Well, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to have Noah come back?" In the meantime, we had spoken to Mr. Joe.
Conaway?
Yes, thank you, Conaway. He said he was going to come out, take a look. It shouldn't be a problem. We'll come out, look at it. We saw the truck up there. We saw the city truck up there and we never heard anything negative. So when Mr. Noah asked, "What do you want me to do?", Chris is like, "Well, you're already here. Just go ahead, sorry, go ahead and paint it." We really didn't think it was going to be a problem. We realize now we hadn't got the formal okay from Joe. And we realize that we did make a mistake and we jumped the gun. But I just want everyone here to know, it was completely unintentional. We were not trying to get above anybody or anything. It's been made to look like we were being deviant. As the parking, as it was being done, you guys came, not you guys, but the city, Bob and the people across the street called and made a complaint that we were painting the curb, and they sent the city out after hours to repaint it. If they would have called us and told us, "Hey, take the paint off," we would have removed it. No one ever called us and asked us to take the paint off. But since then, it's been said by Mr. Schwartz numerous times that he will see to it that we are fined by the city for doing what we did because it was so atrocious and so whatever. I just want to make sure everyone here knows, it was not intentional. It was just, we got excited. He was already there. We didn't want to make the guy come back out. And yes, we painted it red and white. We didn't know it wasn't supposed to be red and white. Parking signs that say "No Parking" are red and white. So we thought red and white was the right color. It should have been yellow, I was told. Hopefully, in the long term, it'll all get worked out. But I just want to make sure you all have the exact facts and know, we really did not try to go over on anyone. We really didn't. It's just important that you all know what really happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name's Bill Simone. I live at 228 Mallard Court. And I am here to add to the comments about the Home Owners Association, which I am on the board. I just want to address some comments that were made two weeks ago to you guys, that we were building a mini Ripken Stadium back there. We're not building anything. We, there was a jungle gym there. We had to tear it down due to safety reasons, and we were replacing the jungle gym. They were, you were told that we were putting seating in and lighting in. Well, yes, we are. We got another, we got our second picnic table and we're going to put a bench in, okay? The lighting is, is going to be one motion-activated light because our, our neighbors were complaining. People were going back there at nighttime and going, I think his word was nefarious things. So I just wanted to clear up those comments that were made last week. It was also mentioned that the speaker said he had no idea why we tore down the jungle gym, but he knows exactly why we tore down the jungle gym. So I just wanted to clear up those facts and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Floor is still open. We're under public comment. Item seven on the agenda. Anyone else wish to address the council? Before we move on in the agenda, I just wanted to say real quickly that the city of Haverty Grace will act as appropriately as it believes it should be doing so. With full consultation with the city attorney and director of planning and the director of administration, we issued the permit because we didn't believe, we could not. And that's what we do. The city of Haverty Grace does not have a dog in this race. When people come to us and they have a permit that they want issued, we go by the letter of the law. Regardless if people say we erred or we made a mistake, that's what the Board of Appeals is for. The city of Haverty Grace did what we believe is in the best interest of the people. And as, as a former tenure resident of Bayview, I now live in Grace Harbor, but I commend anyone who steps up and joins the HOA board and tries to do right by that neighborhood. I raised my kids in that neighborhood. I remember taking them there 20 years ago when it really was just a little teeny, teeny, tiny little potluck. And again, I know it's not easy being on a HOA board. You know, there's going to be neighborhood differences. It, it, it's clear that there is a neighborhood issue going on here. And I want everyone to think that regardless of what's said to the council, we don't get swayed by who has the best argument. We get swayed by the law. And again, I thank everybody for coming. I, I concede there's a lot of passion here. I hope everyone at the end of the day goes back and be good neighbors. But again, it's, Bayview Estates is a wonderful neighborhood. I love the 10 years I had to raise my kids there.
Still live there.
Yeah, yeah, Brian Garth, right, yeah. Anyway, I gotta say, I just said, I feel, I feel for everybody coming up here, all sides of it. But the assumption that the city made a mistake, maybe we did, but we don't believe we did because we check everything very carefully. We don't play favorites. We don't play politics. When the permit was submitted to us, we checked all the boxes and we believed, as the government, the permit was issued. There's a process. If somebody wants to appeal that, then, and they can go ahead and follow that process. At this point, that is, I want everyone just to take a deep breath and just move forward and everything will work out. Does anybody else have anything they want to say before we move on? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time. Now, we have some business to take care of here. Number eight, appointments. We have several appointments this evening. We have two, the Economic Development Advisory Board. Like to hand this off to Councilmember Boyer.
Mayor, I move to nominate Allison Kirchnevee and John Muldoon for appointment to the Economic Development Board, Advisory Board.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer and it's seconded by Councilmember Schenegas. This is for the appointment of Ms. Allison Kirchnevee and John Muldoon to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
John, in his role as previous president of the Chamber of Commerce, is stepping out of that role and Allison is stepping into that role, but John is asked to stay on the Advisory Board. And again, he's an incredible wealth of information and both of them have contributed a lot in the past two meetings that I've been able to attend. It's been a pleasure to have them on. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Any other comments? Okay, well, this is for the appointment of Ms. Allison Kirchnevee and Mr. John Muldoon to the Economic Development Advisory Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appointments carry six, zero, and affirmative. Item B, Councilmember Boyer.
Mayor, I move to nominate Donald Forsythe to the Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board.
Second?
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Schenegas. This is for the appointment of Mr. Donald Forsythe to the Street Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Questions or comments? Councilmember Schenegas?
Donald has been an 80-year resident of Haverty Grace and he is very conscientious about the activities that happen around Otsego and Legion and Ontario Street, Route 40, all about there. He's definitely given us some suggestions and makes recommendations for how it could be a safer community. So I highly recommend his knowledge and hands-on involvement to be a part of this traffic and safety advisory board. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schenegas. Any other questions or comments? The appointment of Mr. Donald Forsythe to the Street Traffic Safety Advisory Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to appoint carries six, zero, and affirmative. Item C, Tourism Advisory Board appointment, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, Mayor. I move to appoint Kelly Boye Sadiq to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Second?
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, a seconded by Council President. This is for Ms. Kelly Boye Sadiq to the Tourism Advisory Board. Questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appointment carries six, zero, and affirmative. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions. Item number 10, proclamations. We have no proclamations. Item 11, presentations. Item A, we do have a presentation from our planning department. Mr. Goins.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. So GIS Day, National GIS Day, is November 19th of this year. And of course, GIS is Geographic Information Systems, which essentially is where mapping and databases kind of collide. And it's very important for planners in terms of our spatial analysis, reviewing plans, but also a key component of that is providing information to the public. And so what we're going to have on 19th is sort of an open house at 12:30 to 3:30. So we're inviting you and all the members of the public to come and learn about GIS. And we're very excited this year because we have created the Haverty Grace GIS Hub, thanks to Mary Maury Thaxton, who is our GIS expert. She has developed this hub. And I'm going to walk through some of the apps we've created, kind of give you an idea of what we're working on. This is really just the start of our process. We have a lot of ideas about maps we can create and how we can push out information to the public. So hopefully this goes smooth and you can see, I know the screen is kind of small there. So let me just back out to the main hub. All right, so this is what it looks like. This is the GIS hub. And we have a series of maps, applications that we've created, which I'll walk through in just a moment. And then we have some storybooks from the comprehensive plan, which are, are really interactive maps as much as they are sort of screenshots of maps and explanation. And then we have down here where the public can actually go in and download the layers and the data that we've created. So if they want to download those and use those in other applications, they can. So the first one here is just a standard interactive map. It's very similar to the county's map, except that we've been able to include a lot of our local layers that we've created. So the county's map has sort of broad county and some of our layers, but not all of them. So the way it's sort of structured is you have the layers, which are just map features, things like, you know, parks, the zoning, streets, things of that nature on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, we have instructions on how to use the map. I won't go over those. I'll just sort of explain as I'm walking through it. There's an option here to where someone can type in an address or a property owner's name and it's going to zoom to the property and show the information. So I'll just demonstrate that now. If I just type in our address, and it's going to show the results. Actually, may have selected somewhere else. Yeah, it's a little difficult to see. Let's reload there and go back to it. So I'll just do it by zooming in here a little bit. So normally when we type the address, it's going to zoom to the property. And so as you can see, it's sort of zoomed to the area. And then from here, I can go and select various layers that I want to view.
Now, is this something that you need to log into? I see there's a sign in. Is that just for the administrators or is that?
Yeah, this mainly just shows information about the site for staff. Let's see, I've clicked on the property layers. We've also added some of our planning layers, the comprehensive plan. We have annexations. So there's a lot of information that we've created for folks to see. It doesn't look the greatest on these screens, but as people can view it on their computers, it'll be much more interactive. So now I want to go to some of our sort of apps we've created that fine-tune the information and provide more interactivity. So this is one we've created for historic sites. When I enter the site, it's going to have some, just explanation about different ways to navigate the, the website. So when I enter it, and then this displays, it's called Attachment Viewer, so it shows all the historic sites within the city. And I can click on that and it's going to give me some of the historical photos. I can click through those and I can zoom to the property, see where it's, and then I can view a website that shows information from MHT, the Maryland Historic Trust. See where it's, and then I can view a website that shows information from MHT, the Maryland Historic Trust. So that's just a cool way to see some of the historic sites. And then we have one for tourists, which we're calling like Visit Haverty Grace. And we've been able to map a lot of the local aspects here in Haverty Grace. So this is the intro screen, there's a button you enter. Again, more instructions on how to navigate the site. And then, so we've mapped things like Ride the Tide for folks. Uh, we've mapped museums, the art sculptures, the parks. It has obviously the pictures that people can see what the museums look like. They can click on that, see additional photographs, they can go to the website. We've also put in things like the parks and the promenade in more of an interactive format. Um, and the really cool thing about these apps is it sort of functions like Google Maps, where you can see your location within the map. So if you're using an iPhone and you're out in the city, it's going to show you where you are in relation to the features on the map. So it's really cool from that standpoint. And then we have one where we mapped a lot of the Green Team projects. So things like their community gardens and all the other things that they're building out in the community. And then there's a link to their website for each one of the aspects that are on the map. And then we have one for the Art Trail. And so we're planning on developing one for each trail, like Lafayette Trail and those others that are more common. And then we have one, the Quick Zoning Lookup Tool. So if someone's looking for their zoning information, they can come here. Again, more instructions. Just click on the map, it's going to show them their zoning. And then it has a nice feature where it's going to link to the actual zoning district and show them what's permitted. There's also a link that goes to the, um, like the bulk regulations, the development regulations table. Um, I mentioned the Comprehensive Plan maps. Won't go through those since those have been on the website for a while. So yeah, that's kind of it. And then we're going to be developing a lot more maps and we look forward to that. So we look forward to seeing everybody on the 19th to learn more about GIS. So thank you for your time.
Council, any questions?
I just want to say this is, this is pretty interesting. The more I, the more I click around on my computer, the, uh, the more interesting it is.
Yeah, it'll look better on someone's computer right in front of them. It's a little bit cleaner now.
Absolutely. No, there's a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this and, uh, I, I, I can already say this is a favorite. So I can spend, I'm going to spend some time on this, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Councilmember Booger. Any other questions or comments on the presentation? Mr. Goins, thank you for presenting the mother of all rabbit holes. You know, this is going to definitely take some time and a lot of my bandwidth. But thanks for the presentation. And also like to thank Ms. Thaxton for being here this evening as a, for support from your department. Uh, Ms. Thaxton's our GIS person for the city of Haverty Grace. So anyway, thank you very much. Any further questions, we'll move on to the agenda. Okay, alright, thank you again. Item 12, Resolutions. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council citizens, I move to introduce a charter resolution concerning amending sections pertaining to city elections for first reading.
Council, I have a motion by Council President to have a second. Second. Second by Councilmember Booger. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce charter resolution carries six zero and affirmative, Council. This will be known as Charter Resolution 305, 305. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Haverty Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Maryland Constitution, Article 11E of the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Haverty Grace City Charter for Section 19, amending Sections 5 through 16 of the City Charter generally pertaining to city elections. Council, I have a motion to adopt Charter Resolution 305.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Booger, second by Council President. Questions or comments before the roll call vote? Council President.
Mr. Mayor, could I have Mr. Ruchinski comment on this specifically?
Sure. Uh, Council President, members of the council. Uh, what you have before you is a charter resolution, if passed, would amend the city charter, the sections the mayor just mentioned. A lot of the language, you'll find it throughout the document and it's, it's actually twofold. There's a charter resolution and also an ordinance, because these provisions preside in both documents. But within the charter resolution, you'll see there's clarification for domicile, clarifying, you know, you have to live within the city boundaries of the city versus just the zip code in order to vote in our elections, so kind of cleaning some of that up. We're also cleaning up the language dealing with the maintenance of the voter rolls. So sometimes they become outdated, sometimes people become deceased. And we have to have a method of cleaning that up, if you will. And what that does is it enables the Board of Election Supervisors to establish a process to maintain those rolls, if you will. And then the last big item you'll see in here is the removal of the write-in provision. So that, that's what this document does. And if passed, it would achieve those items.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
And I don't recall reading, but did it, so it addressed the provisionals, but did it also address the write-ins?
Correct. It would take away that requirement that the ballot have write-in spaces.
And that's going to make it easier for, and less time-consuming for the, for those personnel who are, who actually are there at the polls, right?
That's correct. And that's also twofold, because we basically have to lease or buy that, that equipment now.
Right.
Uh, the Board of Elections with Harford County can't really provide that service anymore. So it's very hard to actually count those write-ins, if you will. And the process as currently established to become a candidate in our election, it's pretty generous, so.
Is there any history of anyone winning an election based on the write-ins?
Not to my knowledge.
There you go.
But just to that point, when you kind of go that route, you kind of short-circuit the process going through ethics and the Board of Election Supervisors.
It's timy's.
And filing fee.
The chapters and the codes that are written. So I appreciate that, Adam, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Boyer?
I think I want to pull thread a little bit more. As candidates, we've all filled out the ethics forms before. But can you talk a little bit more about that so that the, the community understands when we talk about what the ethics forms are, what's the importance of them and why they're there?
So prior, when you, prior to running for office in the city, you have to fill out a candidate packet and that goes before the Board of Ethics, right? And the whole purpose of that is to clear any conflicts that may or may not exist and look at other, or do you satisfy the requirements to run in that position or for that position? When you take that away, I mean, in theory, you could have someone running that maybe doesn't live here or has a conflict of interest, one of those items. So that's what that addresses.
Any other questions? Okay, good, thank you, Mr. Ruchinski. Our council will do a roll call vote on the Charter Resolution 305. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
A roll call vote, a six zero and affirmative. City Charter Resolution 305 is adopted on, is adopted. Uh, but we need to have a public hearing and that public hearing, uh, has to take place after a 21 days' notice for advertisement. So that would probably put us at, put us at the November 17th.
November 17th, okay.
Council meeting. So the public hearing on Charter Resolution 305 will be November 17th. Okay? Thank you. We're going to go to item 13, ordinances. This evening, we have one ordinance. I'll hand that off to the Council President, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, Council citizens all, this is the sister ordinance to the previous resolution. So I move to introduce ordinance concerning amending Chapter 61, Elections for First Reading.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President to have a second. Second by Councilmember Boyer. Council, this is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. This will be known as Ordinance 1211, 1211. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverty Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 33 and 34 of the Haverty Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 61, known as Elections. Council, I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1211 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Add Councilmember Jones and?
Booger.
Councilmember Boyer. Thank you. Questions or comments on Ordinance 1211 before we do a roll call vote? Yes.
And again, for, just for clarity, you had mentioned that there was state law that changed. And the Board of Elections for Harford County is, we can no longer use the Board of Elections voting machines. And how, what else, what else has changed that has?
No, I think I'll let Chris address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. So, uh, as we learned at the last election, there, the ability for the Harford County Board of Elections to assist us in our elections is greatly limited due to some directives passed down from the state. So really, Harford County Board of Elections is able to help us by providing us their roles that they use. Um, and some other, you know, resources like the, uh, the tags and whatnot that, you know, sort of that seal the machines. Uh, but largely, everything else is on us. We have identified a vendor that provides these machines and this equipment. So it's actually the exact same type of equipment that we've been using in the past. Um, but we're obligated to take, uh, you know, to take on that level of responsibility ourselves and rely on the, uh, the county a bit less. So those, to talk a little bit more, because there's some, I guess, questions about the write-ins in those machines. Those, those machines are unable to read write-ins. Um, so it required our Board of Election Supervisors to go through every single ballot, one by one, document the write-ins, then, you know, have their numbers verified by the person sitting to the left of them. And to Councilmember Booger's point, nobody can remember if ever there has been a successful write-in campaign done by anybody within the city of Haverty Grace. But more importantly, to the point that Adam was making, the Board of Election Supervisors was very concerned about the write-in process essentially creates a loophole where, where a person could potentially bypass the vetting process that's established in code. Uh, they wouldn't pay the fee, they would not be vetted by the Ethics Commission. The Board of Election Supervisors themselves also evaluates the packets to make sure that the people are eligible or meet the criteria to be elected officials within the city of Haverty Grace. So some part of this is just cleaning up related to some of the, us taking on more responsibility and, uh, actually managing the elections and the voter rolls and related to that. And then other pieces of it is addressing, you know, those challenges that currently exist within our, our code. Yes, and that was included in our, in the budget for this year already. We anticipated those kind of based on what we had, our experience last year, so, yep. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other further questions? This is going to be a roll call vote on Ordinance 1211. Councilmember Schenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By six to zero, roll call affirmative vote. Ordinance 1211 is adopted on first reading. Council President, will a public hearing on November 3rd?
Yeah, works for me.
Alright, sounds good. Public hearing on Ordinance 1211 will be on November 3rd at the next council meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, and we're going to go to old business. This evening, we have none. New business, we have a couple, um, events and I'll hand it off to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for your consideration this evening. Uh, we have two events for you. Uh, and they are both events that we've done several times in the past. So one of them is the Merry Marketplace on Franklin Street for December 13th from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Uh, and it runs on Franklin Street between Union and St. John. And the second one is what we heard Donna Mandel comment on earlier, is the Haverty Grace Winter Farmer's Market. So January 3rd and 17th, February 7th and 21st, March 7th and 21st, April 4th and 18th of 2026, from 9:00 AM to 11:00. And it's, uh, taking place in the same place the standard farmer's market took place at, right here in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Council President, will you do these by consent?
Yes, that's perfect.
Do I have a motion to adopt or to approve these two events?
So moved.
I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments?
So is there a time change on the market? Is it from 8:00 to 9:00 and then 11:00? I think it went to 12:00, right? Didn't it go to 12:00 noon?
9:00 to 11:00.
The Winter Farmer's Market, I believe, is, is a truncated schedule.
Okay, so that's different than the regular, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against it say nay. Merry Marketplace and Haverty Grace Winter Farmer's Market, both approved, six zero and affirmative. Thank you, Council. And now we're going to go to reports from our directors. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, colleagues, citizens, both here and at home. I do have my comments this evening, but as you see, Director Conaway is out this evening and I have a couple of comments from him that I will read as well. Uh, but I'll start with mine. So, uh, it's beginning to look a lot like, that's right, fall in the city of Haverty Grace. So on Saturday, October 25th, 10:00 AM, is the Second Annual Fall Fest on the 400 block of Franklin Street. And the same day at 12:30 is the Washington Street Grand Opening and Fall Festival. And that's all I'm going to say about that, because I know Mayor Martin's going to talk in more detail about it during his comments. At the Star Center, Evil Dead the Musical is playing on multiple dates, but the only remaining performance that's not sold out is October 24th. Um, I know several people that have gone. I was able to go last Friday. Uh, it's amazing, it's very adult-oriented humor, so make sure you're, you know, you're comfortable with that. But it's a riot and if you go, even if you're not in the splatter zone or splash zone, don't wear clothes that you really care about, because it's probably going to get some red dye on it. Vampire Circus is performing on November 1st at 8:00 PM at the Star Center. And tickets to both of those events are available at starcentermd.com. And I've been saying this a lot lately, but I want to continue to say it. Please remember that going through the Star Center website is the only way to ensure that you are receiving authentic Star Center event tickets. We do not sell tickets on any other reseller's site. So the link through the Star Center website will take you to the city's Eventbrite page. And that is the only place you can get actual, real, legitimate city of Haverty Grace Star Center tickets. Uh, the Haverty Grace Opera House Broadway Series is presenting The Mystery of Edwin Drood. And that opens November 1st and it has performances through the 9th. This year's Broadway Series director is Michael Holick, who is a veteran Broadway actor, award-winning voice performer and passionate educator with decades-spanning career across stage, screen, and interactive media. And you can purchase tickets to that performance and learn about the other performances at the Opera House at hdgoperhouse.org. And I do want to end my comments this evening by offering some gratitude to some city of Haverty Grace employees and city volunteers. So, uh, kudos and thank you to Bambi Johnson and her team, the Department of Public Works and the Police Department, and the Sesquahanna Masonic Lodge for their hard work in making the Oktoberfest such a success. I was not able to attend it personally, but I hear it was fantastic and a lot of people really enjoyed it. So. I was not able to attend it personally, but I hear it was fantastic and a lot of people really enjoyed it. So thank you. Thank you to the Arts Commission and the Department of Public Works for their work in making the fall concerts at Concord Point Park successful. They were very well attended for a first year and I've heard nothing but positive feedback about them. So thank you. I do offer my appreciation to our Planning Director, Mr. Goins, and his staff, especially Ms. Maury Thaxton, sitting over there, for all their hard work on that GIS hub, the mapping, the information they've put together. I think it's a really welcome addition to the city's website. I think a lot of citizens, the public in general, are gonna really appreciate what that has to offer. So thank you very much for your work that you put into that. And then finally, I offer a special thank you to the city's DPW team for all of their hard work with all those beautiful fall decorations that you see around town. And I do also want to give a shout out to the man in the back behind the window, Jimmy Burrell. He is the city's artist and he's done all of those wonderful pieces of artwork that you see, especially the new ones this year, all that Scooby Doo stuff. So thank you, Jimmy, for your hard work on that. And that concludes my report and I will read Joe Conaway's report. The semi-annual hydrant flushing started today and it's expected to continue for forty-five days. So if you happen to have discolored water, please run your cold water until it clears. And the three hundred and four hundred blocks of Congress Avenue will become one-way from Market Street, from Market Street to Union Avenue on Friday, October twenty-fourth. The contractor will be installing angled parking and DPW will be installing do not enter slash one-way signage at Congress and Union Avenue and Congress and North Washington Street intersections on Thursday. MDOT will install the required signage on the signals at Congress and Union Avenue on Friday, October twenty-fourth. And that concludes Mr. Conaway's comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie, and we're gonna go to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So on Thursday, you can continue to go both ways, but on Friday you can't.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Friday at eight o'clock in the morning or Friday midnight?
I do not have that level of detail in Mr. Conaway's report, but I'm willing to bet they're gonna make it super clear to anybody that's out there that it's.
Because I want to be one of the last people to go the wrong way. Okay, thank you.
Go find out quickly.
You have a twelve hour window.
Haverdy Grace officers will be out there to ensure that you will be the first one to get ticketed.
I want to be the first one to go the wrong way.
I think that's great. It's gonna open up extra parking, right? I mean, there's, I mean, going with the one-way and the fishbone actually generates some additional parking spots. So that's, that's always a good thing. So.
Yes, that's the reason for the one-way, to add some more parking, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Director Goins, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mayor. Only additional comments I have tonight are just to notify everyone about the November sixth Board of Appeals hearing. We have three conditional use applications, one for a hotel, one for a gas station at the green property at the corner of Level Road and Bully Rock Parkway, as well as a, I guess, a booster pump on the Legacies property that requires a conditional use as well. So we have those three applications, kind of the same properties, but that's all I had tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. We're gonna go to Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development, Tourism. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens in the audience and at home. This week we are selling, celebrating Maryland Economic Development Week that started today, the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. We will be joining the Hartford County Office of Economic Development as well as the Hartford County Office of Tourism for site visits throughout the county and in the city of Haverdy Grace. I provided that information, I believe, last week and earlier today, the site visits for Haverdy Grace. I missed the last council meeting. I was attending a conference in Eastern Maryland, Easton, please, excuse me. It was the Maryland Main Street Conference. We are required to attend two conferences a year to keep our Maryland Main Street designation. So this was right on time because we're also in the process of completing our interviews to fill the position of the new Chief of Main Street and Brand Marketing, as well as a part-time position for Main Street and Tourism Coordinator. So all of these things are coming together and hopefully I'll have some news about those two positions at the next council meeting. Thank you, Council, for approving the applications for Allison Christian Avey and John Muldoon, representing the Haverdy Grace Chamber of Commerce. John is a new member at large. We welcome them both to EDAB. And also thank you for approving the application for Kelly Boye Siddique to the Tourism Advisory Board. I believe she's also representing the Chamber on the Tourism Advisory Board. Franklin Street is hosting its second annual Fall Festival on Saturday, October twenty-fifth from ten AM to four PM, along with our Fall Festival, which I'm sure the mayor will talk about. Their event starts two hours before ours, before the city event, so we would just like to cross-market and promote with them as well and encourage everyone to attend both events. Thursday, October thirtieth, the Haverdy Grace Recreation Committee will be hosting its annual costume contest. The Tourism Office works very closely and we participate and support this event. So registration is at the stage located on Pennington Avenue anytime between five and seven PM. Then the trick or treat, trick or treat starts in the downtown businesses and we encourage all of the parents and kids to visit any business that is participating. Last but not least, I wanted to give a little shout out to Lori Orwitz and our volunteers at the Visitor Center. The city hosted eleven bus tours in the twenty twenty-five season. We had guests from all over, pretty much from probably Virginia up to Maine, visiting us on Saturdays. They visited the museums, our public art tours, shopping tours, and our volunteers are always there assisting us particularly on the weekend hours, putting together swag bags, giving directions, going to lunch, you know, with people on these bus tours. So we would like to increase those tours in twenty twenty-six, but we are happy to announce we did complete eleven of those in twenty twenty-five and that's up by five from the twenty twenty-four season. So that concludes my report. I talk too much when I miss a council meeting, so sorry, I'm back. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. We appreciate the update. Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Abdi, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, as well as citizens of Haverdy Grace. Good evening. I'll be introducing the financial conditions for our three funds this, this council session, starting off with the Journal Fund. The fund balance currently stands at, since my last reporting is up one hundred thirty-six thousand, current fund balance stands at ten million, four hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred. The beginning balance has not changed and currently stands at two million, seven hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred. Revenues to date are up since my last reporting, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, and currently stands at fourteen million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred. In terms of expenditures, they're up six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred since my last reporting, and expenditures currently stand at six million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand. Going on to the Water Insurer Fund, the fund balance, since my last reporting, is down three hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred, and currently stands at fund balance, five million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred. The beginning balance has not changed as well and currently stands at four million, seven hundred thousand, five hundred. In terms of the revenue side, it is up fifty thousand, four hundred, and currently stands at four million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred. On the expense side, it is up three hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred, and currently in terms of expense side to, to date, stands at two million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred. Onto the last, the Marina Fund, the fund balance is up fourteen thousand since the last reporting. Current fund balance stands at nine hundred, four thousand, two hundred. The beginning balance also has not changed and currently stands at nine hundred, nine hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred. In terms of the revenue side, it is up twenty-four thousand, eight hundred, and to date for fiscal twenty-six, currently stands at one hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred. In terms of expenses, they're up ten thousand, eight hundred. To date, expenses are two hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred. Back to you, Mayor. That concludes my financial highlights for this council session.
Thank you very much, Director Abdi. Any questions for our Finance Director? Sir, thank you. Appreciate the update. And we're gonna go to the Chief of Police. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. I just wanted to start by saying how proud I am of our four officers that were promoted tonight. All of our officers work extremely hard to get on a promotion list. They have to go through a pretty rigorous testing and then they're ranked and there's promotion boards and things. And so our promotion process is they're good for a two-year list. And so I'm very proud of them. They, they bring a great variety of experiences from K nine to CID, school resource. And so I have no doubt that they're gonna do fantastic things on their new assignments. And so in closing, the last thing I wanted, by the time our next council meeting comes up, Halloween will be in the books. And so I just want to remind everybody to, if you're driving that night, you know, there's a lot of events going on. If you're driving that night, let's just be careful, keep an eye out for things. And then if you're taking your children trick or treating, let's use sidewalks, try to take some flashlights with you and things like that, glow sticks maybe. They're, they're all good things to have with you. So just use caution, you know, and be safe and your life's not worth a Snickers bar, so.
It's debatable. I got some eighth grade students might disagree with that. Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate it. Thank you. And we're gonna go to comments from the council members. We're gonna start with Councilmember Booker.
Thank you, Mayor, Directors, citizens who are with us in the audience still and those who are online. I know that there's a lot of things going on. I won't steal the mayor's thunder on that. It's for the downtime ribbon cutting. I will say, under council business, I am, Mayor, I am working on a resolution for the, for the Arts Commission. I wanted to ask your, your permission and email, so I want to run it past legal on that kind of good stuff. It should be in your inbox. So when you, so when you get a chance, it's a good thing, making some honorable members, much like the Decoy Museum. So, so does, and I understand that our attorney is on vacation right now, so when she gets back, not a big rush on that, but I, I think it's a good thing. And I hope you, I hope you agree with me on that one. All things Explore Haverdy Grace. I get questions all the time about when is this, when is that, and I point them to the, you know, the coveted Explore Haverdy Grace. That, that is the one-stop shop for most of the events. And if something that is, if you want something on there, all you need to do is just contact Lori Orwitz or Ms. Bridget Johnson and they'll help you out, right? So the Oyster Fest is one of my favorites and that's coming up November twenty-second. Mark your calendars and buy those tickets, right? They've got VIP tickets. You can get there a little early too if you want to, plus there's also a percentage that actually goes to an organization, like a nonprofit, right? So that's always a good thing. And in closing, I want to thank the Haverdy Grace Police Department, EMS, all of our first responders, our Sesquahanna Host Company for keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Booker. And we're gonna go to comments from Councilmember Ellis.
Mayor, Council, citizens at home and still with us. I wanted to bring something to everyone's attention that got, that it just came out today pretty much. Haverdy Grace Elementary School is, has a boys mentoring program. And starting December nineteenth, they're, they're looking for people to come have breakfast at least one day a, 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 a week with some of the children in that, in that mentoring program. So I know I've said it a hundred times, be the person that you needed when you were younger. So I know, I know how much it would have meant to me for, for my dad or my coach or somebody to show up and just have a breakfast with, breakfast with me. So if anybody is interested in that, you can reach out to me or reach out to Haverdy Grace Elementary School. They, they just put it up today to kind of field, field the interest in the community. Secondly, I work in Bel Air and on a daily basis I talk to people and I talk about Haverdy Grace often. And recently, it's been more, more and more like Haverdy Grace is great, Haverdy Grace is always having stuff. And, and the, the, the first Fridays here don't even compare with the ones in, in Bel Air. And I'm just extremely proud to be here and, and, and I think everyone should, should pat themselves on the back for everything they do for the, for the city. I, in, in closing, I want to thank everybody in advance for everything that they're gonna do during the holiday season and all the volunteers that are gonna help with the countless events that are going on. I know that's what brought me here. And I was on the trolley a couple days ago and I was talking to, to a neighbor of mine actually, and they were saying how their family is deciding to come here for the holidays this year. And it's, it's great to be somewhere that, that people travel to and not travel from for the holidays and for special events. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ellis? Good evening, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, and lots of folks in the audience tonight and folks at home. I just want to remind folks that this Saturday, October twenty-fifth, is Drug Takeback Day. This is out of the Sheriff's Office, but they have several precincts throughout the county where you can drop off any unwanted or unused prescription drugs. And Haverdy Grace Police Department is one of those drop-offs. So if you keep that in mind from ten to two this Saturday, and that's all the comments I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Good evening, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor, colleagues and residents. I want to first thank everybody from the Police Department who's chosen to step up to be a leader for our Police Department. We have a great group of people that work for our Police Department. We are blessed to have them and they are the type of people that our kids run to whenever they are in need, and I've, I've seen it personally. And I want to thank you for being a leader there too. Thank you. The Street and Traffic Advisory, Street and Traffic Safety Advisory Board will be, not be meeting this month. They will resume in November, starting, it'll be on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of November, from six to seven PM, and we'll be meeting at the police station moving forward. The Haverdy Grace Twinning is sponsoring a film at the Star Center on November fourth from seven to nine. There are tickets that you need to purchase for it. They're fifteen dollars each. And they need to get to a certain number of tickets in order to be able to get the film. The title of the film is called The Last Lecture and it reflects on Richard Reich's, I never say his last name, career of teaching. He's a professor at Harvard, but he's also been, has, has been a cabinet secretary on multiple administrations. Third I have is I attended the Hartford County Education Foundation Breakfast on Friday, last Friday, and I want to give congratulations, I didn't write down her name, to our former elementary school principal, and I don't have her name written down. Does anybody remember what her name is? I'll go look it up. It's on Facebook.
Gazdia?
Is it Gazdia?
Yeah.
She was very excited to receive it and she's a, she was a blessing to our students. She has moved on to another assignment, but it's great to see Haverdy Grace principals. We've had two amazing and now, now on to three amazing principals at the elementary school and very excited to see her recognized. And today, I attended a deployment. And today, I attended a deployment ceremony for the One Seven Two Nine Support Maintenance Company, and they are located here in Haverty Grace, and they're being deployed, it's the Maryland National Guard, they're being deployed to support the U.S. Joint Task Force Southern Border. And there's about a hundred and thirty soldiers who will be going down to the southern border, and everybody knows where the Maryland National Guard is, down in the industrial park area. So that's where they're based out of. And if anybody is interested, I'm going to try to organize for us a couple of care packages throughout the year. They'll be deployed for a year. I want to try to coordinate a couple of care packages to send to them as they're down in Texas for the year. So if you're interested, please reach out to me. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. We're going to go to Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens in the audience, and citizens at home. The fall season has been so lovely. This weekend was amazing. We all had an opportunity to attend many events that were out there, namely, the biggest was the Arts Festival. It was great, two days' worth of artists showing their wares. And there's so many creative people in our communities and in the surrounding area that come to Haverty Grace, that bring people closer together, tight-knit, so much for, as an example, I work at Perryville Middle School as a teacher, seventh grade, and one of the teachers there, I didn't even know, but her and her husband had a booth there, and it just connected our community that much closer, and it made it neat for me to be able to share an experience with a colleague, and, you know, to see that people from other areas are coming in and showing their art. I know that we have a lot of local artists that are book writers, local authors, and it's really neat to see people joining together, collaborating with their writing, with their creative abilities and styles, and just putting it out there, living, you know, taking advantage, taking that step and being brave, and putting together their thoughts and ideas into print to share with our community. I had the pleasure of attending a wonderful event with my colleagues, Councilwoman, Councilmember Boyer and Councilmember Booker. We attended the Girl Scout Silver Award from Troop Eleven. She presented her ADA station. It was installed at the lighthouse, and the young lady put fifty hours of work into making sure that happened for our citizens. And it was enlightening to us as we were able to, you know, see how her bringing that to our lighthouse gives us a greater opportunity to help our citizens when we're out in the community. So thank you very much. And also, with the same council members, we ran, we're running in the same circle that weekend, we attended the Police and Fire Safety Event at the Susquehanna Firehouse Four on Revolution. It was amazing. There were many booths there inside. There were, there was a simulation house, there was the fire marshal dog and stuffed animal there for the kids to see. There were opportunities to ride on the ladder and go up in the air and see the apparatus that, you know, helps burning buildings up high. There was an opportunity for people to see the firefighters in training, putting out a car fire. So it showed kids and adults what they go through, the experience. So it was really interesting. And we also had our K-9 crew out there, showing kids and adults how, you know, the training is important, and how that they are there to protect and to help them as well. It was a great event, and it was lovely to see the community coming together, sharing safety, and their, you know, love for and care for our city. I have a recommendation to my council members, Traffic and Safety Advisory Board, a nice sidewalk across Revolution to the Firehouse Number Four. It would be great. It's also a pathway to the elementary school and to the community stores like Royal Farms and Bakeway, the Bake Store, Jamie Bakes, and the Quick Mart, so.
Bakes by Tay.
Bakes by Tay. Please forgive me, and I guess I need to take a trip there so I can remember the name. Anyway, that's my recommendation, and I just wish you all a wonderful fall season, please. If you have little ones, come out to the Haverty Grace Elementary trunk or treat this Thursday, five to seven PM. Dress up, come out and say hello. Your council will be there with their trunk to give you tricks or treat as well. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Shenegas. Appreciate the update. And we're going to go to comments from Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens, all, tell me if I may, you said ADA at the lighthouse. It's an AED, right?
ADA? I stand corrected, yes. I am so used to saying ADA, safety for sidewalks, et cetera, AED. Thank you for your correction.
I just wanted to make sure she got the credit for it.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, yes.
And thank you to the council members for going to that, and I fully agree about the sidewalk, because the football team will always have a thing at the fire hall, and there's not enough parking, so you have to park cross-street at the doctor's office, and it's impossible to get across that street sometimes. So that's a really good idea, that's actually a good place. Speaking of football, I got to tell you, Haverty Grace is a football town. Last, not this past Friday, Friday before, we played Aberdeen at home, and it was a close game. We won in overtime, twenty-six to twenty. It was amazing, just, it was a big, oh man, it was one of the best feelings ever, any game I've ever seen Haverty Grace play, because it was neck and neck the whole time, and then we tied it up, and then held Aberdeen off on their first set of downs, and then I think the first chance we got, we scored right away and won. So it was pretty good. And so this past Friday, we played at Votech, Harford Tech, and we beat them thirty to nothing. So right now, Haverty Grace sits at number one in our region, and number three in our division statewide, which means that on November eleventh, we will have a home playoff game on this field, and I think that's pretty cool. So if our luck holds up, now, next two games, I expect us to probably win this weekend and then lose the weekend after on Halloween. We're playing Joppa, and it's a tough team, and they're out of our league, but who knows? We beat them before. So if our luck continues with the playoff games, we'll play all the way until we make it to states, right here in Haverty Grace. Every game will be a home game for us. So that's pretty cool. And congratulate to all the boys, and all the cheerleaders, and everybody out there that coaches for making that happen. This Friday, we will be playing at North Harford, and then, like I said, next week is Joppa. But for this Saturday, is rec homecoming for football right here on this field. And Chief, what am I going to say? Don't park on my curb, right? So I'll be sitting in the booth, I'm the announcer for the rec team, and love it, you know, it gives me a chance to get back, and, but I'll sit up there, and I can't tell you how many times I just see cars just, you know, blatantly park right on the yellow curb, and it blocks the crosswalk is the problem. So you can't see these little kids who dart out into traffic, and it's really dangerous for them. So don't park on the yellow curb. With that, I'm looking forward to the Oyster Feast, and, you know, everybody have fun at Halloween and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'll go to item eighteen, comments from the Mayor. Well, I wouldn't recommend getting your second shingle shot dose the day before a council meeting. I'm so jacked up on ibuprofen right now, my ears are ringing, so. Ever have, man, I'll tell you, I don't even know why I did that to myself. I should have just got shingles. My wife maybe gets a shingle shot vaccine. She's like, I'm telling you, if you don't get it, you're going to get shingles. So, I don't know. So I got the shingle shot vaccine, and they tell you it's no picnic, so, anyway. But my whole ear's been ringing all night, so excuse me if I've been making weird faces and looking at people funny, but. So Thursday night concerts, you know, I want to thank the members of the Arts Commission, Lindsay, Kevin, everybody that made a last-minute idea into reality. It was just something we toyed around, end of July, when the Lafayette visit on July twenty-ninth came, and we had a concert down there at Conquer Point Park, and some of us were saying, hey, wouldn't it be cool if we had a fall series, we're at a concert, you know, how we do at the Concert in the Park at Tidings Park in June and July? So they pulled it off. They did four Thursday nights in a row. We only lost the first one due to bad weather, you know, it's always a crapshoot in the fall with the weather, but we lucked out, three consecutive Thursday nights, had nice weather and a nice crowd, and so kudos to the Arts Commission. So next year, in their portfolio, they will still do the June and July Concert in the Park at Tidings Park, where the Pavilion is, gazebo. But then we will again do the fall concert series down at the Lighthouse, probably in September and October, so. Always love to see new events, more opportunities for citizens to go enjoy some free entertainment in our city, so it's a wonderful thing. Thank you. Chief, again, I want to also congratulate your four officers that got promoted. All the men you saw tonight, get those promotions and take that oath, they've been in our department for a long time. They're very dedicated officers, they love the city of Haverty Grace. I don't want to put them on the spot, but you know what? They all had a chance, I mean, we're not the highest-paying police organization in the county, or the state, or the world, okay? And these men stay here because of our community, and we're working really hard as a council and administration to try to rectify our pay scale over the next couple of years, you know, to kind of compensate our officers where they need to be, but that's not why they stay here. They stay here because of the people, of the community, and I want to really thank them, and thank your leadership, Chief, for having such a good department there. So we're very lucky to have those officers. On Saturday, this Saturday come up, first of all, the month of October is just a very heavy activity month, especially if you live down towards Conquer Point Park. You know, the first weekend, you have the Upper Chesapeake Bay Pride Festival, then the next weekend, you have the Oktoberfest, and then you have, you know, the arts show was Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. The good news is, for folks that live down near Conquer Point Park, we have another festival in town, but it's going to be on Washington Street, and we're going to close the two blocks off of Washington Street, the one-hundred, two-hundred block, which is effectively the new restoration project. And, you know, again, we've talked about it over the last couple of years, as the project has, you know, I wouldn't say rolled along, kind of crept along. Took a lot longer than we wanted it to, a lot of things played in, you know, supply chain, getting, you know, I don't know if people noticed or not, but each of those new light poles are custom-made, you know, and, you know, don't want to blame things on COVID, but it seemed like before COVID happened, you could get something in two months, then after COVID, it takes like nine months to get something made. It's just, whatever. I mean, but we wanted those custom-made light poles, because they serve multiple purposes. The height of those poles, the way the light shines on those poles, more down rather than out at three sixty degrees, those poles can handle mounted speakers, those poles can handle multiple settings of anything hanging, whether it's signs or baskets. There's multiple outlets on the poles, because we know we're going to be hooking up Christmas lights and other things at those poles. All those poles have been irrigated with water lines, be able to feed whatever flower baskets are in them, so that's why those poles are custom-made, and it took a long time to get, and that's just one thing. I mean, I could go into, you know, the style of brick that we had to order, because we were very specific on the brick, the width of the sidewalk, the materials being used underneath the sidewalks, the conduit lines we put down, and the water lines that ran through the conduit lines, and conduit lines that will be able to fit more conduit lines in the future, making all the intersections more accessible for persons of disabilities. A lot of things went into the thought process of how we engineered those two blocks. It wasn't just, you know, throwing darts at a, you know, calendar, saying, oh, that looks good. No, I mean, everything, I mean, to the tree, I mean, to the hydrangea trees, to the crape myrtles, and the color of the crape myrtles, it just wasn't any color crape myrtle. It was white crape myrtles, because they bloom earlier in the season, and they keep their leaves, their flowers longer. That's why we picked white. And why we picked black gum trees is because they're a native species, and when they change color, they turn into scarlet-red leaves, which we thought white and scarlet would be a good warrior color, right? But everything, even the hydrangea trees, and everything went there was for a reason. So I know it was very unceremonious when the last paving truck left, and we just kind of opened up the street, you know? It's kind of like, okay, I feel like we should kind of like, you know, commemorate this moment, because a lot of people worked hard to get this done, and a lot of businesses also had to struggle through the construction delays as well, access from the public and things like that. So, yeah, this Saturday, this Saturday at twelve-thirty, we're going to dedicate the street officially, and then from one o'clock to five o'clock, we're going to have a really nice, big fall festival. I told Lori Orwitz, who's our tourism manager, I said, Lori, I want you to invite all the best vendors you've ever had for any events we've ever done, whether it's First Friday, Oktoberfest, anything, and tell them that the mayor's inviting them, and I want them to be part of the celebration. So whether it's crafts, or food trucks, or whatever vendors it is, I mean, we're inviting people from the farmer's market, you know, we're hoping there's going to be, you know, apple cider and things like that, and it's just a fall festival. We want the citizens to come and enjoy this new streetscape that belongs to everybody. It's ours. It's a free event, we want everyone to come. If you don't want to hear a bunch of politicians talk at twelve-thirty, just come at one o'clock. But we're going to dedicate the street, and we're going to give thanks to the people who all had a hand in making that possible. So like I said, I just, I've lived in Haverty Grace for thirty-five years. I'm not a native of the city. When I first got on council, in two thousand eight, I was the only non-native. Now, I don't know if there's any natives on the council, and I guess that's the way times change sometimes. That's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just democracy, and I tell people, you know, the day you move to Haverty Grace, you drink the water from our faucets, which come from Susquehanna River, you're Haverty Grace citizen. But, you know, I've heard many times, people say, oh, Haverty Grace is, you know, oh, it's just so close, Haverty Grace is just, hmm, it's so close to this. So close to what? You know, like people say, it's the next Annapolis, or whatever, I've heard this all the time, and I actually grew up outside Annapolis, in Swire Park. Haverty Grace isn't the next Annapolis. We are the first Haverty Grace, is what we are. And my father always told me a saying, it's a goofy saying, I never understood what it was till I got older, but he used to say to me, if you want to run fast, you got to run fast. And if we want to be a great city, we got to be a great city. And everything that we do, every little detail that we do, everything reflects upon the people who live here and the people who visit us, and we are a great city, because we have great people in our city who do great things. Years ago, we didn't even have any recycling bins in our city. We didn't have any water fountains, public water fountains, in our city. It's not rocket science, we just didn't do it. When I first got on council, the bathrooms, the public bathroom in Hutchins Park and down by the yacht basin said, bathrooms courtesy of the mayor and city council. I've never seen a city in my life where you have to thank politicians to go to bathroom. And so the way we used to do, I mean, I took those signs down the minute I became mayor, but like the way we do things in this town, we have to do things thinking about who we are, what we want to be, and everything we do, from the free trolleys, to the Opera House, to the Star Center, I mean, to the Shoreline Restoration Project, to the Downtown Restoration Project, all these things is emblematic of the people who live in this city. And I've always said for a long time, we can evolve and move forward and still keep the character of who we are. Just because we change the look and we move forward doesn't mean we change ourselves. This is a better representation of us. That's what Saturday is all about. And if you're not doing, and if you can come out Saturday, please come out Saturday, and I would love to, and you get a chance, come up to me, please say hi to me, shake my hand, and I will thank you personally for being there. With that said, we are going to adjourn. We have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Councilmember Jones?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion adjourns. The time is now nine oh one PM. Thank you very much. We'll see you at the next council meeting. Happy Halloween, everybody.